Good afternoon, everyone. This is Christine Robinson, Mayor of West Gray, and welcome to the May 19th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Planning. We are using audio only to conduct this electronic meeting. Video is not possible at this time due to limited bandwidth in some areas of West Gray. Bandwidth is challenging our ability to do a complete video broadcast. So for now, we'll be sharing today's agenda in addition to the audio. I am calling the meeting to order. All members of council are present. As indicated through their login, we have a quorum. The agenda has been posted and circulated. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the West Gray website, www.westgray.com, courtesy of Whitman Telecom. The technology for this meeting is being managed by staff. Please refrain from clicking buttons throughout the meeting unless prompted. Before we continue, I'd ask our recreation supervisor, Cody Hewlett, to provide an overview of some of the other key points for this meeting. Supervisor Hewlett, please.
Good afternoon. Before I begin, if you get disconnected at any point during this meeting, you can join us by phone by dialing 1-647-558-0588 and enter the meeting ID 82104710716. Both members of council and staff have been briefed on the various features of the Zoom meeting software, and we will be using the raise our hand function to speak. Members of council will be using the green checkmark to vote in favor of a motion and the red X button to vote against. Each member of council will be called upon verbally to confirm their votes for the benefit of guests who have joined us on the phone rather than using the online software. If you have any technical issues throughout the meeting, you can message Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor, and I will be happy to help you out. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hewlett. Very much appreciate all of that information. So I draw your attention to the items of business on our agenda. Number one, disclosure pecuniary interests, direct or indirect. Members of committee, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interests? If so, please indicate by raising your hand. I am not seeing any, but as it is the start of the meeting, Supervisor Hewlett, do you see any committee members wishing to disclose? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on. Item two, I just want to draw your attention to the agenda at this point. Members of committee and those listening to the meeting, I draw your attention to the agenda in that 1:30 we have an electronic delegation from Stan and Charlene Clausen, owners of 1032 Victoria Street in Ayton regarding a development proposal and possible Victoria Street road extension. We will begin our meeting with this item, which is item three, other. Following this item, we will deal with item two, the public meeting, which has been identified as beginning at 2:00 P.M. Please note, committee members, we have received additional information from the Clausens via email. The one that I can draw your attention to is there was an excerpt from the Hanover Post titled "A Disastrous Fire Strikes Ayton District Farms", as well as a historical piece written by George Watson. Clerk Turner, were there any other emails circulated with regard to this delegation? No, thank you very much. Clerk Turner, I'm turning this item over to you and perhaps Planner Spencer to provide any information prior to the delegation speaking.
Yes, I think the best course of action is to let Mr. and Mrs. Clausen or one of the other provide their, present their delegations. And I believe Ms. Spencer, our manager, planning and development, and possibly Vance Swinski, if he is attending this meeting, could also speak to the road issue.
Okay, well, thank you for that suggestion. Let's begin with Stan and Charlene Clausen. Welcome, and we are looking forward to your electronic delegation, please.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Please continue.
Okay, so in regards to actually what you called it, the road extension is not really an extension as it is part of the existing municipal road here in Ayton. The documentation I sent was basically proof that there were homes below ours. At one point, there was two homes down there, and that the road extended to the end of our property to meet the needs of both of those homes. What we would like to see is that road brought back to a standard that is equal to the basic substandardness of Victoria Street as is now, and which would be approximately two or three gravel loads and a grading is what we're looking for for right now. And we would like to sever four lots off of that Victoria Street. Not a subdivision. I have no plans on doing a subdivision. We have allotted a 60-foot space for future development. If somebody down the road, if we sell the property or somebody wants to do something, there is an allotment made there so that the land is not landlocked behind these other homes. There is also a 30-foot easement at the end of the property in case said development ever got done and they needed drainage. We've applied, we've put that into the drawing as well. Basically, we just want four lots to come off of the existing municipal asset, which is Victoria Street, and that's basically all we want.
Excellent. Anything further? Charlene, is your delegation complete?
There was another piece of paper in that grouping, and it was actually a map that showed Victoria Street many years ago. And it had the people's names written right on it who owned property. And there was lots all the way down to the very, very bottom, almost to the river. And it shows Victoria Street as Victoria Street all the way to the bottom.
Thank you. That's excellent. Clerk Turner, please.
Mapping that information did come after the agenda was sent out. So Lindsay did allude to sending it out as well. I thought I'd send it out earlier, but I did, I did just send it about five minutes ago, the map itself. And then two articles. So council should have that at least in their gen, in their emails.
So members of committee, which is members of council sitting as committee, if you're so inclined to be able to check your email for that, thank you for the clarification, Clerk Turner, because I had not received it at this point. So that's good information. And Charlene, I appreciate that you're using historical documentation here. It's helpful. Thank you. Either Stan or Charlene, is there anything further before I continue on with staff?
No, not at this point. Our point was basically to let everyone know that it was always a road right to the bottom of our property. And it was because those two houses burned down and they chose to move into town further that the road got neglected because nobody lived down there. But it was always Victoria Street.
I have the map in hand now, so thank you. I'm having a visual of where various individuals lived. Okay, well, thank you very much for your delegation. Let's, let's start with our planner. Planner Spencer, if you've got some comment, then I'll go to our Director of Infrastructure and Public Works, circle back to our clerk. And I apologize for the pause there. I was just speaking with our clerk. So Planner Spencer, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would like to just reiterate in this subject is that the problem here lies the crux of the problem. So without open and maintained road frontage, the official plan doesn't allow for severances. And I guess what we've been trying to establish is if that road was ever closed by bylaw or if it was simply a matter of, as Charlene has alluded to, that because no one lived down that road, it just, the maintenance of it didn't make sense. So without that open and maintained roadway, the severances that they're looking for aren't supported. So really, at the end of the day, there needs to be some establishment by council to kind of determine whether or not they want to take on the prospect of opening and maintaining the road if it's not already open and who the cost for that roadway would be borne upon.
I think what I'd be looking for, and let's see if council is looking for this, is we'll hear from staff if members of council have any questions on this. But possibly what we'd be looking for is a staff report back on this. Don't really want it to be all verbal. And maybe these are the type of considerations that staff can put this in a report. But I'd be looking to council for that information. Now, our Director of Public Works and Infrastructure, Director Shrinsky, please.
I, thank you, worship. I would concur with what you're suggesting. I also echo the comments made by our planner. And I would, I would need to sort of delve into the history of Victoria Street and so forth in assisting council with making that determination.
Good. Thank you very much. Clerk Turner, please.
Yes, Ms. Spencer, I wondered if you could elaborate whether, you know, if the road is year-round maintained or if it becomes year-round maintained, what the county policy is regarding the establishment of four more, creation of four more lots.
Is there? Laura Lee Spencer, please.
Sorry, thank you. I was muted. I apologize for that.
No worries.
So the county, we've actually had a meeting with the county planning staff. And as a result of the number of lots that they wish to create, it's not simply just a straightforward severance process. They would have to do an official plan amendment in order to get these lots developed. So there's two separate processes at hand. Plus, there would be a rezoning application that would follow after all of that was complete.
Plan a subdivision with four or more lots. Is that correct, Ms. Spencer?
That's correct, yes. So anything over three lots is essentially requires an official plan amendment.
And a plan of subdivision.
And a plan of subdivision.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments from staff before I ask committee if there's any questions? Seeing none. Are there any questions from our committee members? Please indicate. So with your hand up, Councilor Hergert.
Hello. Thank you, Charlene, for your presentation. I'm curious about, I have several questions from staff. But my question to Charlene would be, are there any, is there any option of just having three lots to reduce this plan of subdivision? And at that point, you know, I guess, are you agreeable to just three?
Charlene Clausen, are you able to respond to that?
Yes, we, we have no problem with just doing three lots. Ideally, we thought four simply because it increased the tax base for, for you guys. And we had such a call for four that we figured if we could do four, we could do four. We don't have a problem with moving it to three to avoid all of the different things.
So those, those lots, then, you would propose that they're residential? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And not having seen this map, I guess I'm just at a bit of a loss. To know, is there plenty of room for like water and septic systems on those, on that area?
Our property is, we have nine acres available. So what the lots would be, would be, we planned it to be according to what Laura Lai had given me in the, when I first approached this idea. And the paperwork said that they had to be 100 by 200 square feet or 100 feet by 200 feet. So we designed them to be 100 by 100-foot frontage with 200-foot depth, which was in accordance to having septic and well on a dwelling within a town type thing.
Yep, okay. So I would, I don't know, as you move down the planning process, or maybe I just am not privileged to it at this moment. I guess I'd like to see this drawing. Is there, usually developers would pay for the road to be put through. So I guess now my question flicks over to our Director of Infrastructure, Public Works. What would that cost to upgrade it to just gravel and grade, which is what the remainder of Victoria Street is? And then what does it cost to do that stretch from County Road 3 all the way to the end of the post?
Director Shrinsky, are you able to provide some dollar figures?
Through you, worship. I recall putting together an estimate for council. It was just a verbal request. But what I could do, if it's to the, if it's to the satisfaction of council, I could submit those numbers with the report that council wishes staff to come back with.
Yeah, I think that's a really great idea. We'll just have staff jot down the items that committee is looking for in a report, and that will obviously be one of them. So thank you for that. Now, Councilor Hergert, the only map that I was referring to is the one that you have received about 10 minutes ago now. I don't have any other written submission on a map. Clerk Turner, can you just respond to that for clarity, please?
Well, that would certainly be part of the report showing what the proposal is. So it'll be an all-encompassing report with the Director of Infrastructure and the manager of planning. I guess I assume collectively bring back a report to address all those issues.
Good, thank you. Councilor Hergert, you still have the mic.
My last question then to our planner would be, how much area do we have listed for future development in Ayton? I think that this is a property that's scheduled for future development.
Planner Spencer, are you able to respond to that? Or is that something for the report?
I would be, put it into more detail on the report. However, this is within the settlement area boundary of Ayton. There seems to be lots of interest in property within Ayton and not a lot of lots available for sale. But I'd have, I don't have the figures in front of me, but I can get that for the report.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Councilor Hergert. Anything further?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And Planner Spencer, yes, I quite agree. Ayton is a sought-after area for certain. So if housing is there, you know, that is a definite plus. Councilor Townsend, please.
Thank you, it's Councilor Townsend. A couple of questions. The first one is recognizing if you go to four lots, you require a subdivision plan. Is there the possibility of requesting a, an amendment to that or an exception to that?
Planner Spencer, please.
That is something that isn't supported by the county. Now, and that was the reason that we had met with them, you know, quite a few weeks ago now. They're very adamant about the position. And the only downside to that would be that they have every right to appeal.
Okay, I ask because of the recent regulations that are changing and have changed and likely will continue to do so to encourage more housing. And I wasn't sure of the openness of county. And perhaps, Madam Mayor, you can pursue that at county just to see if there's a more deeper reason for that rather than just three versus four. My second question had to do with the road itself. And I ask because I appreciate Charlene Clausen's map because, and comment about the houses having been there because it almost sounds like the road was almost abandoned when the houses disappeared. And I'm wondering, was it ever declared as an unmaintained road? Whether or not it still is a neglected road, whatever that may mean in terms of planning or official planning. And I wonder if anyone, either planner or Director of the Works, could comment on that.
I'm going to have our Director Shrinsky comment on that. And I think this is something we'll delve into, into the report. But certainly, it's a question, let's get some response today. Director Shrinsky, please.
Yes, through you, worship. I, I, at this point in time, I cannot give an accurate answer with respect to whether it's an unmaintained road allowance or a quote-unquote abandoned road because there's no more buildings or dwellings down there. So again, what I could do is, if it's acceptable to council through the report that's forthcoming, I could provide some background information for council.
Yes, and that's very, very good. Thank you for not responding to something if you don't have the background on it. So we very much appreciate that. It can be put in the report, and we will look forward to reading that. Clerk Turner, please.
I would anticipate that would involve our municipal solicitor doing a title search, the PIN map, and finding out whether or not that section was ever assumed into the road. And if it was, was it ever closed by bylaw?
Yep. Good. Councilor Townsend, anything further?
Yes, I'm wondering if we can make sure that when the report comes back, that it covers that topic. But also, I'm pleased that the clerk made the comment. He was, because I was going to say exactly the same thing about what could we determine whether there was actually a bylaw to close it or make it so it was no longer maintained.
Very, very good. You're quite welcome. Very good. Now, I'm sure I saw Councilor Hergert's hand up, but now it's not. So just double-checking. Councilor Hergert, you have the mic.
Thank you very much. I guess I am only curious about the closed, stopped-up, open-maintained road allowance. Typically, with that information, that would come forward from a surveyor who's going to go back and research all of these documents and so on. And I just wonder if, why would we bear the cost of doing the legal work if currently we do not have an application ahead of us? That we would be, I mean, who's going to, who's going to make, who's going to pay for it? Right? We're going to pay for proposed development, you know, research? I think that actually should be done at the, with the application.
Well, therein lies the discussion for today. So council sitting as committee can make a determination. I think it's prudent that we get a report back based on the information that we have here in the municipal office. Maybe if committee is so inclined, we stop short of doing the title search, PIN search with regard to where we would call upon a legal, are legal to do that. So maybe do as much as we can in-house, have that discussion, and then decide further through the application process. Your thoughts, Councilor Hergert?
Well, I agree. I think that there, you know, this is a good amount of information to come forward initially. But at this point, we're spending staff, we're spending legal, we're, you know, we're getting a little more involved. And I think a proper application is how to proceed. And then we start digging legally and so on.
Good, thank you for that. Anything further?
Not at this time, thank you.
Clerk Turner, please.
One I haven't, your staff can pursue is we do have bylaw listings for each township. And then, of course, for West Gray. So in that, I do recall there being for the townships listings of road closures within the bylaw indexes for each township. I'm not sure if they're exhaustive, but that's something that should be searched because if, obviously, if we can find that that section indeed was closed through the index, it might result in not having to go to this list.
So quite frankly, I think this is an important work process that we need to follow anyway. I think council needs to know, as well as our Public Works Department, the status of that road and also how it's going to relate to our services. Okay. Councilor Townsend, please.
Thank you. I would like to state that I think it would be very unfair to require a resident or any proponent to file an application as similar to where we can't make a decision or provide direction until we have the right information. And I think if we can't state the absolute status of that road, I think we're obligated to at least identify the status of the road with confidence before we require, if you will, other steps on the proponent's perspective.
Thank you for that. Clerk Turner, please.
So I think just with noted in the minutes that direction the committee wants to go, then we can, staff can undertake that work. I don't think it necessarily requires a motion.
Very good. We have a, what I feel is a comprehensive list for staff to report back in a report on. Let's have that report. It'll be on the agenda. We'll certainly invite Stan and Charlene Clausen back for, for this meeting. Obviously, it's going to be a public meeting anyway. So I think this is good. It's something that we need to follow through on. Now I'm seeing Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Yes, it's Deputy Mayor Hutchinson here. My question is for the planner, and that would be, if we were, if they were to move ahead, and this all, once this all gets sorted out with the three properties to start, how do we, how would you make it so that the rest of that property, the rest of the acreage can be designated as still for future development? You know, it may not be the Mr. and Mrs. Clausen that want to do it, but there's somebody else that come forward, they sell their house or whatever it is. So we're not landlocking that back part of that parcel there because that's pretty much the only land that would be left in Ayton. There's a little, there's a few lots across the street. So is that something that we do, they could, where we would be able to do, where, you know, you're going to severance to three, but keep the balance of it for future development is my question.
So good question, good question, Deputy Mayor. Planner Spencer, please.
It's through you, Madam Mayor. That is exactly what we would intend to do, to allow for further development in future. So as Charlene had, had mentioned earlier, the plan that they have in place now already shows a 20-meter right-of-way that's for future road, should someone want to develop behind the property. I would only recommend that we change the zoning on the lots, let's say, that get created, three lots, however that might work out, only change those to residential zone and leave the future development zone for future use. So it can be assessed. If something doesn't happen for 15 years, we want to be able to go back and look at that and make sure it's still a good idea.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, anything further?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Robinson, and thank you for your answer, Ms. Spencer. So I guess at that, that time, regardless of when it is, next year, 100 years, it doesn't matter, that fourth lot that would be on Victoria Street would be part of that. And then you have, again, the road, the created road allowance that they've been putting in there. That could all go with the rest of that at that time of if and when it ever went. That's all I wanted to know, is that we're not going to lose a lot somewhere in, you know, this or that, those other lots potentially for the future of the town.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further?
No, that's fine. Thank you very much, Mayor Robinson.
You're welcome. Councilor Shea, please.
Yes, thank you. To Ms. Spencer, what document are you referring to when you talk about the depicting right-of-way along the back?
The only document that we have been provided by the Clausens specifically relates to what they put together for a design. It's all concept.
So that's not something that we've seen?
No, it is not.
No, we do not have that in the agenda.
So what I have in the agenda is a gray county map that has a yellow designated area marked as current property or subject property, Clausen. Is that, that is the property we're talking about?
Planner Spencer or Clerk Turner, please.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, all right. Before I wrap up, Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. It was just one more question there. I'm just looking at this. And this was more towards Director of Infrastructure and possibly the planner. So looking forward, if it was found that the road was closed and Mr. and Mrs. Claussen had to do work on it. My question is, is the properties across, which is also, it's another owner, which is designated as future development. If they had to put that portion of the road, bring it up to the standard that the balance of the road is in to equal that. If they had to do that, and then the people across the street or the landowner across the street, all of a sudden started to make some decisions to put in four or five lots there is what a reassurance or do they get some form of a credit back as, you know, another owner just sitting here waiting for that structure to happen? And then take advantage of that expense being taken care of by someone else.
Yes, Clerk Turner, and that is yes, acknowledging your question, having Clerk Turner respond to it.
Now, perhaps let Ms. Spencer, whether agree or disagree with my following statement, but we did have this session with the Claussen's about if the road needed to be extended and make it more affordable to maybe talk to their neighbors to the north south of Victoria Street to see if they might be interested in. If they are interested at the same time as developing the lots, then they could share in that cost of the road allowance extension. If the, as the case may be, which will determine. Obviously, it would lower the cost for each property owner. If it was totally the Claussen's that went ahead, I think the only thing we can do is like a best efforts clause to try to recoup money from these other, others when they develop. But it's not certainly as ironclad as I think if they all develop at the same time and there's some agreement, but perhaps let Ms. Spencer add to that.
Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That would be ideal if both property owners wanted to develop at the same time and share the expense of, you know, developing that roadway. But again, as Mark said, I agree with him. It's a best efforts clause if that happens in future going forward. And how that would be documented and carried forward would be something we need to have a legal opinion on.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? So the way we will leave this as next steps is having a report prepared from the appropriate staff. We have a number of questions and research points to prepare in the report. So what I'm going to ask is when this report is going to go on the agenda, could you please connect with Stan and Charlene Claussen? So that they are aware that it will be on a certain agenda timeframe and that they're able to see the report. All right. Well, I want to say thank you, Stan and Charlene Claussen for being a delegation. And very much appreciate it. We have a path forward on this one. But before I put a bow on this, if you will, Council Townsend.
Yes, just one last question, since we are going to go down this path. Is, do we have some estimated timeframe that we can provide for the report?
I was leaving that out so that there would, because there seemed to be quite a bit of information, but I know staff worked diligently and rather efficiently. So I didn't suggest a timeframe, but because you brought it forward. How about Planner Spencer? Timeframe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think between Vance and myself that we could establish, you know, something to come forward in the next month or so, just there's small pieces and components from a legal perspective that we need to determine. So we just need time to get that done.
Thank you for that. Clerk Turner has a comment.
Well, given the comments from Ms. Spencer, I don't think it'll be in time for the June 2nd committee, the whole planning meeting, which we don't have any business at this time. So you're probably looking at the July coming with the whole meeting, which would be about the second Tuesday of the month, I believe.
So that's a bit of a timeframe, at least at this point. Anything further, Council Townsend?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. I'm not seeing anything further from committee. So we look forward to the report and thank you again, Stan and Charlene Claussen for your delegation. All right, members of committee, we are now on item two. And it does say in the agenda 2:00 PM, so we're just not that far off here. So I will have Clerk Turner read and introduce the public meeting before us. Clerk Turner, please.
Yes, this is a public meeting for a proposed zoning by law amendment. On last described as firstly, lots 16, 17, and 18 Presbyterian Church Survey Plan 513 Durham. Part Park Lot 4, 5, 6, and 7, North Side Chester Street West, Plan 500. Durham Part Lot 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 Presbyterian Church Survey Plan 513 Durham. Part Lot 6, 7, and 8 Presbyterian Church Survey Plan 513 Durham. Part on Name Street Presbyterian Church Plan 513 Durham. Parts 3 to 6, 9, 12, 14, 16, and 17, Plan 17 R 3223, except Part 1, Plan 16 R 7331. Subject to interest of the municipality, municipality West Gray. Secondly, Part Park Lot 5, North Side Chester Street West, Plan 500 Durham. Part on Name Street Presbyterian Church Survey Plan 513 Durham. Part 1, Plan 16 R 7311, subject to interest of the municipality, municipality of West Gray. If you want to know a little more commonly, the house lot which comprises now the larger sized lot was known as 451 Durham Street West in the town of Durham. Maybe easier to remember. So the notice of public meeting was circled in accordance with the Planning Act. It must be noted that there had to be another notice of public meeting sent. The original public meeting was slated for April 21st of this year. However, given the emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the planning applications could not continue during that interim until amending provincial legislation was passed to enable public meetings such as this to continue and then for planning applications to be dealt with. So that, the notice of public meeting was circulated for today's meeting. And I do have comments from two agencies, being the Gray County Planning Department and the Sogging Valley Conservation Authority, which I will read the highlights of. The Gray County Planning Development Department submitted a letter dated March 31st of this year. They note Schedule A of Recolor Gray designates the subject property as a primary settlement area, Section 3.5 states. In brackets, to land use policies and development standards in areas designated primary settlement areas will be in accordance with local official plans and or secondary plans. And then brackets, three. This official plan promotes the development of primary settlement area land use types for full range of residential, commercial, industrial, recreational, and institutional land uses. These areas will be the focus of the majority of growth within the county. County planning staff have no concerns with the proposed developments in that regard. The county goes on to note in Appendix A, they indicate the subject property is adjacent to abandoned landfill, which was previously evaluated through what's called a D4 guideline study. Section 8.10.1 bracket 3 of the official plan states in C, in subsection C, previously evaluated sites. These abandoned landfill sites have had a previous D4 study completed. These existing D4 studies will be utilized to assess the potential impacts to a proposed development. In most cases, the D4 study has identified a reduced area around the site that requires further study if development is proposed within the identified area. A further D4 study or successor document may be required to assess the potential impacts of the abandoned landfill site to the proposed development. Municipal staff, we have confirmed that a D4 study in fact was completed for the abandoned landfill site, which is located north east of the subject property. And that future development meets the recommendations of that D4 study. And just for information purposes, I am just, I am contacting the engineering firm, which was known in that time in 2011 as Genovar. They're now known as WSP. And I'm just having them confirm that in fact there are no issues with the proposed development regarding the abandoned landfill site. The county letter goes on to say that county transportation services has reviewed the file and have no concerns or objections with the proposed zoning amendment. If an entrance is proposed under the county road, an entrance permit is required. And then do you have a letter dated April 7th, 2020 from the Sogging Valley Conservation Authority, which I will summarize as noted in their letter. The Sogging Valley Conservation Authority has reviewed this application in accordance with the memorandum of agreement with the municipality West Gray. And as per their mandated, mandated responsibilities for natural hazard management, including their regulatory role under the Conservation Authorities Act. It is the opinion of authority staff that, one, consistency with Section 3.1, natural heritage policies of the provincial policy statement will, will be demonstrated. Provided Conservation Authority recommendations noted in the letter are implemented. And part of that is in the proposed zoning by law amendment, there is an area and the drainage ditch or the ditch at the east part of the property and running along the southerly portion of the property. That has been identified as an area that the Conservation Authority wanted natural environment zone added to in the zoning by law amendment. And that in fact has been identified in the corresponding schedule. Number two, consistency with Section 2.1 natural heritage policies. The provincial policy statement has been demonstrated with the exception of policy 2.1.7 of the provincial policy statement threatening endangered species, which must be addressed by the ministry of environment conservation parks. And further to that, I know our, our contracted planner Ron Davidson and myself had, have had some correspondence with that ministry. And it seems at best, there may be a bat house that may have to be erected on the property. But that it seems to be the, the all that would be required in terms of the natural heritage policies at this time. Number three, consistency with local planning policies for natural hazards. And natural heritage has been, has been demonstrated with the exception of county policies regarding threatened and dangerous species. Again, which I've just discussed. Number four, Conservation Authority staff recommend the hazard lands delineated on the attached map is own natural environment. And I've noted that as well. We've done so in that schedule to the zoning by law amendment. And number five, a stormwater management plan be undertaken for the subject property. Outlet for stormwater to the on-site water course will require Conservation Authority permission under ORA 16906. And that stormwater management plan will be completed in time by the municipality. And that's it for comments. I don't know, the planner or municipal planner may have verbal comments perhaps?
Absolutely. I will now put it over, pardon me, to Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that was a very comprehensive review that's been done by the county and Sogging Valley Conservation. And as long as we iron out the further issues with respect to the bat house and the location and preservation of the natural heritage features, planning staff have no concerns.
Thank you. Is there any other staff that wish to provide a presentation at this time? Seeing none, thank you very much. I will be going to the audience. However, I want to just acknowledge why Council Townsend has his hand up at this point. Council Townsend, please.
Yes, Council Townsend, I asked, wanted to ask a question on clarification on page four.
Oh, Council Townsend?
Yes.
I would like to just go to the audience first and then I'll come to members of council.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Hang on a second. Okay, Clerk Turner suggesting that it goes to, I was looking, because it's a public meeting, to get public participation right off the bat. So Council Townsend, would you mind just waiting till I have the audience participation?
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Hewlett, could you please determine if there's anyone from the audience, our virtual audience, that wishes to speak to this item, please?
Members of the public who wish to participate in this comment period can either do so by raising their hand, in which we will ask them to state their name and their question. Using the software, you can click on the raise your hand icon, or alternatively, if you've joined us by phone, star nine, or alternatively, you can also send a message to myself, Cody Hewlett, Recreation Supervisor. We will leave a minute or two for members of public and then we will flip it back over.
Thank you. So if you could just wait, everyone, so we could determine if there's anyone virtually that would like to speak to this item at this point. Clerk Turner, would you mind making your comment? And we'll use the time wisely. Thank you. And then I'll go back to Supervisor Hewlett to see if there's anyone. And then back again to members of council. Clerk Turner first.
Sorry, I did notice on the schedule attached to the bylaw 53N does not in fact reflect the hazard area or natural environment zone. So that should be reflected. I have to check the bylaw itself on tonight's council agenda to determine if that has in fact been added. But it does not show that and it should.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Hewlett, is there anyone that's virtually attending that would like to speak?
I am not seeing anybody who wishes to speak, nor did we receive any comments.
So we did not receive any written submissions in our Dropbox or emails or no one's online right now?
None.
Thank you. Council Townsend, then?
Yes, thank you. On page four, there's a reference on the Sogging Conservation Authority report that talks about significant woodlands and then is followed by a statement that says no new development is proposed. And that's a continuation of the paragraph on page three that was titled Gray County Official Plan Policies. And I'm wondering, the no new development is proposed. I'm not sure whether they're talking about only the significant woodlands because it does use the word adjacent or not, and why they would say there's no new development proposed. Because they know there is, which is why we're doing this.
Clerk Turner?
I must admit some confusion with that letter as well. It did speak to mostly significant woodlands outside of the area of the subject property. That may need some clarification.
Further, Council Townsend.
Okay, so does that mean we are okay to proceed or that there is an issue?
Clerk Turner? Clerk Turner is reviewing the paragraph now.
Thank you.
Do you go on to say under the municipality of West Gray official plans that while the zoning by law amendment proposes within the adjacent lands, the significant woodlands, authority staffer of the opinion that the impact of woodlands will be negligible. So they have not gone out and said, as they typically would say, that therefore NIS is not required. I don't see that in the letter. Perhaps I can get some clarification before this evening's council meeting.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. Council Townsend, further, please.
The reason for my question is because they said no new development is why I assumed they didn't comment in a concluding statement like we often see that says therefore they either support or have no concern with it. And that's why I was questioning the clarification. So thank you. I appreciate if you could get that clarification.
Very good. Okay, so any other member of, any other member of council sitting us committee as we are, have any questions at this point? Okay, Council Herger, please.
Mine is minor in nature, but when we have the legal descriptions entirely written out, it should be spelled out on the word firstly and secondly, instead of a number one STLY. And it's very minor in nature, but that happens for the firstly and secondly in the legal descriptions throughout.
Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for that. Clerk Turner?
I did get that, get that legal description from our solicitor Jennifer Schwaz, and that is exactly how she described the subject property. With a number one and a number two.
Okay. Council Hutchinson?
Yes, Council Hutchinson here. If I can just go back to that statement that we were just discussing about the county official plan policy. They seem referring to the significant woodlands that are north of Durham Road.
They seem referring to the significant woodlands that are north of Durham Road West. And it says that no site alteration may be printed on or within lands adjacent to the significant woodlands, unless it was demonstrated through an environmental impact study. That there will be no negative impact. Then it goes on to say, significant woodland is present on the north side of Durham Road West, creates a barrier. That referred to why there's only bylaw amendment was this within the adjacent lands. I don't know, it just, it sounds like to me that they're referring to woodland on the north side of Durham Road West. And there was no environmental impact study done on either side, was there?
Well, let's go to Planner, excuse me, Planner Spencer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, there has not been an environmental impact study completed on this site.
Can you provide a little bit more information that Councilor Townsend is speaking of?
I think
Councilor Hutchinson, rather.
We need to get some clarification on that statement from SBCA. However, typically they would demand right within their correspondence that an environmental impact study would be required as part of their comments. Again, they're talking about no new development and the clause actually relates to, from the PPS, it relates to no new development within or within adjacent lands of a significant woodland. However, SBCA has gone out to properties in the past and determined that the significant woodland component doesn't exist and is negligible.
Okay. Further, Councilor Hutchinsons?
No, I just think, I think it's worthwhile clarifying, clarifying. And one other question I have, we haven't determined the building envelope yet, right, for our future police station?
No, not at this point.
Right, so that we'll have to take into consideration that NE zone.
Yes. Yes, you got that correct, and thank you. Further questions from committee? Okay, Clerk Turner, what would the next steps be?
If the committee is amenable, they could pass, make a recommendation to council to pass the zoning bylaw as amended, of course, to reflect the NE zone, if it's not already indicated as such on the schedule on tonight's council agenda. And then subject to Soggy Valley Conservation Authority comments, favorable comments.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Pardon me, I sort of jumped in.
Clarification from the Soggy Valley Conservation Authority regarding the requirement or not for an EIS.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Robinson. I would move what Clerk Turner has spelt out there. That saved me a big, big sentence there, but I would certainly move that.
Thank you. Councilor Townsend, are you seconding this motion?
It's Councilor Townsend, and yes, I would second that motion per Clerk Turner's description.
Thank you. Comments or questions, please, on the motion? Councilor Townsend, or nope, your check mark is gone. I'm seeing no comments or questions. Then I will call the question on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate with a check mark. Those opposed, please, those opposed, please indicate with an X mark. So I will begin, as mayor, I am in agreement with this motion. Councilor Hutchinson, state your name and how you are voting.
Councilor Hutchinson, in favor.
Councilor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Hamilton, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Councilor Shay, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Shay, yes.
Councilor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Oh, for Hergert, yes.
Councilor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Townsend, in favor.
Motion does carry. Okay, we are now on to item four, which is the next meeting. Now, it does say not determined at this date, but Clerk Turner, any comments?
This time, there is no committee, the whole planning meeting scheduled. The next meeting would have been June 2nd, but it appears there may not be unless things change. Just for information purposes, there is a committee of adjustment meeting on June 2nd at 1:00 PM. So unless there's a special committee, the whole planning meeting before May 31st. I wish all the committee well on future planning applications and processes. I know you'll be in good hands with the new, with our planner, Laurie Spencer, and perhaps even our new clerk, who may have experience in planning as well, perhaps.
Thank you, Clerk Turner. Yes, this would be Clerk Turner's last committee in the whole planning meeting. And I do want to thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with you. You know that very, very well, that you are so professional. You understand planning and processes and procedure, and it's been an absolute delight to work with you. So thank you very much. And this was a very nice agenda to work through with you. There's a lot of thank you for the thumbs up, Clerk Turner. A Councilor Hutchinson is, oh, that's a clap. Very good. Councilor Townsend has a clap. Our CAO, everybody's, I'm going to suggest it's a virtual standing ovation. So thank you very much. Who would like, who would like to have the motion adjourned? I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. Councilor Hutchinson, are you moving adjournment?
Yes, I moved to adjourn, and I can, if I can just add, we'll definitely miss Mr. Turner and all his 150 years experience at the job. It'll, it'll be hard to replace him. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. Councilor, Councilor Hergert, are you seconding the motion to adjourn?
Councilor, yes, seconding.
Thank you very much. On the motion to adjourn, indicate with a check mark or an X mark, please. As mayor, I am in favor of the adjournment. Councilor Townsend, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Townsend, in favor.
Councilor Hergert, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Hergert, yes.
Councilor Shay, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Shay, yes.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Deputy Mayor Hutchinson, in favor.
Councilor Hamilton, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Hamilton, yes.
Councilor Hutchinson, state your name and how you're voting.
Councilor Hutchinson, in favor.
Motion to adjourn is carried. Thank you very much. Folks, I will see you all at 7:00 PM for our virtual council meeting. Well done, everyone. Bye now.